We should name it.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I'd like to open the November fourteenth, uh, twenty-four planning board meeting at seven P. M. Could everyone please rise for the planning board?
Congratulations.
Okay, uh, Randy, we'll get you right in and out of here.
All right.
Do you have a big map?
I have a big map, but it's not correct.
Okay.
But it'll show you.
And for everybody, uh, this is kind of a probably a formality because he's gonna be just having to go to the Z. B. A. Okay. I'll pass this down through. He's on Hadley Drive there that was existing. I think we've discussed this somewhat previously. The lot was giving given variance because it was, what's acreage on it?
So it was my father's house and my grandmother and grandfather's trailer on one deed. I came in in two thousand and eighteen and separated it and did a variance and put the trailer on its own deed and the house on its own deed. There was, well, it's basically, I think, two, two and a half acres with the house and the trailer.
Total.
Total.
Oh, yeah, it was, yeah.
Yeah, but the trailer right now is on point three five.
Okay, so what exactly you're trying to do now?
Um, if you, let me see this. So you see the trailer. Over top of the trailer is what I want to do. See the, is that purple? The purple line?
Yeah.
And the red line, the, the trailer's there and you can see the, uh, twelve by thirty-five porch added onto the trailer. And then you see what I want to do. Over top of it.
Okay, so, but the problem is, um,
The, uh,
It doesn't need the setbacks?
The setbacks are the problem. The setbacks to the back and to the side, to my father's house, to the side, into the back, to the woods.
Now, you said you're also, you're also trying to do a garage, too?
That's included in that.
Well, if you weren't doing a garage, would that, would everyone need the setbacks then?
The setback is not going to be met on the left rear. It's, it's like four feet, two. I, if I could, I could move the, the, the double wide, but I can't because the well's in the way.
Yeah, I got you.
And the well is right near the driveway. So the trailer's here.
Yeah.
The driveway's here, the well's here. I'd like, I would have shifted it, but I can't because of the well. The wells, I'm moving it as much as far to the left as I can. I got a lot of room on the left side. I got forty or fifty feet. But the well stops me.
Like I say, this, this is really something that we can't, because the only way to do this is with a variance.
Yeah. I came here to get the refusal so I can go to the Z. B. A. and deal with them and the public hearing.
Uh, so what we'll have to do is draft a letter. Denying this and send them to the Z. B. A.
So Alan wrote that letter.
This is our code. I'll try to read this. A one twelve seventy-two non-conforming uses. Non-conformity use shall not be enlarged beyond the area. Well, this isn't a non-conforming use though, is it?
I got a special variance with no restriction in eighteen.
Would you, yeah, this, this, is this a use or is this a? Okay, well.
So that, that letter that I was sent, so basically Alan wrote that letter and he wasn't sure it was correct. And he never was sure. He contacted me a couple of days ago and said, Randy, I, I sent the letter. I don't know if it's correct. I don't know if that's right or wrong. But I sent the letter.
I'll, I'll read this anyway. Non-conforming use shall not be enlarged beyond the area of the existing structure which the use is located. Which structure existed prior to adaptation of this chapter. Which was done before, you know, zoning, the original. The trailer's been there how long?
Seventy-four.
Okay. Unless granted a special use permit from the planning board, said expansion shall be subject to site plan approval to be considered at the same time as a special use permit application. But, but this isn't, I don't think it's about use that it's about.
No, that doesn't make sense, really. You're putting a, a.
I'm taking a fourteen by seventy, a fourteen by sixty-four trailer out. With a thirty-five by twelve four-seater room.
Right.
And putting a twenty-seven by sixty-four double wide in with a thirty by thirty-two garage.
See, it's a non-conforming lot because it's not two acres.
Yes.
Right. And I thought the variance would cover, the variance with no restriction would cover an eighteen.
Yeah, but it's still a matter of code, it's a setbacks.
Right.
And I, I think if you're gonna get a variance, usually that's a matter of hardship, you know? So I, I don't see us doing anything but kicking it to Z. B. A. and let them.
I don't understand, I, but I don't think this, um.
I, I don't see where it applies.
No, this doesn't apply. I think it has to go to Z. B. A.
Well, it has to go regardless.
Yeah. But this I don't think makes sense because he is already there. Love it, no?
Yeah, it's, I don't know.
Yeah, but it's saying in a area of variance, the way the dimension requirements is not required in order for a building permit to be secured.
Right.
Oh.
But you have to comply with the setbacks.
Which you can't.
Which I can't.
So that's why you're going to the Z. B. A.
Yeah, I've already talked to my neighbors and, because I already knew this is gonna happen.
Okay, but will, nothing will change as far as the well or septic?
No, the septic still conforms with what I'm putting up and the well, like I said, the well is there and there's no problem with the well. Um, I just can't, if I could move that trailer over.
Yeah.
Because I got forty feet on the left, I would, but the, this is the driveway and this is the well.
Yeah.
So I can't move anymore to the left.
Well, these are two separate.
Well, the, the other part of this, there's one more line here. Building structures located in non-conforming lots may be moved, expanded or enlarged or replaced as long as such changes complies with all required setbacks of the district in which it's located.
Yeah.
So it does not.
Oh, in, in that respect, yes, it does.
Yeah, there was more to it.
So is that the reason why we're gonna kick this to Z. B. A.?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, let's do it.
I'm glad I looked this up because I don't know where you got that.
That, that's what Alan sent me in the mail.
Yeah.
It's not the whole thing though. I saw it quick, I'm like, why, where's the rest of it?
Well, regardless, you know.
It's gotta go to Z. B. A.
So.
A motion to send the non-conforming lot at fifty-two Hadley Drive to the zoning board to get, um,
Variance.
A variance for setbacks.
Okay. Wait a second. Say it. Did you hear that, what she said?
I heard it.
Okay. Wait a second, okay, second it, okay. Well, fair.
All right.
Thank you, so, uh.
Next up?
Kind of formality and so you gotta.
Yeah.
Get Johnny Johnson.
Yeah, I think I'm all set.
Yeah.
All right. We're good.
Then you'll have two denial letters.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll.
See you guys.
I'm ready. I'll send it report.
Yeah, I can say, yeah, the West project, this is nothing.
Okay, uh. I don't see Jackie out there, so I guess.
I get the lesser half, I'm her husband and law partner, Peter Murray.
Oh, okay.
I was here a few years ago when the, the whole process was going through the approval.
That was what, eight years ago?
No, not quite eight, it feels like that at times.
You guys wanna come up?
Yeah.
We'll get into this.
Well, good evening, Chairman and Board members. My name's Peter Murray from the Murray Law Firm and I represent the applicant with respect to, uh, the request for an extend, a one-year extension for their site plan approval that was, uh, originally granted. I think it might have been in two thousand and twenty-one. We were here last at the board's September meeting and since there, since then, there has been some movement forward, which we're very happy about, but we're not completely finished with New York State D. E. C. yet. There's been a draft net conservation benefit plan with Magnolia Trust for the mitigation site, which is a requirement for the D. E. C. incidental take permit. That has been submitted to D. E. C. back in September and it was just two days ago that we got, uh, correspondence from D. E. C. saying that there was a notice of an incomplete permit application only because they had a handful of questions, uh, to be responded to by the applicant. We had sent that to, uh, the board's attorney and to the chairman's attention just so the board was aware of that. The applicant today had met with Magnolia Trust to review the comments that were set forth in the D. E. C. notice. Um, I believe that was a very good meeting and they feel like they can get those responses very quickly.
On that note, I am sorry, I, I just, just read this last night and I should have gotten it to April so she could make a copy for everybody and response from D. E. C. Would you mind just going through and hitting the high points because I don't think anybody in the board has, when we copied that thing that just came in, like eleventh hour. Some of it may seem kind of nitpicking.
Do you have a draft that you read?
Didn't you think? Yeah, there was a two inch, six inch, seven inch.
Or, you know, there was some points there that.
There it is. Um, yeah, so the comments they had was that the N. C. B. P. should explain why onsite mitigation was not possible for the project. The mowing height should be set at eight inches, not six. Mitigation area management section should include language that allows for an increase or decrease in mowing frequency to meet habitat, excuse me, habitat suitability based on vegetation monitoring and input from D. E. C. upon receipt of annual reports. Since the mitigation area is not in the D. E. C. region where the solar facility is proposed, we would like to see photos of the mitigation area provided annually to demonstrate the mitigation requirements and timeliness, excuse me, are being met timelines. Please include this as part of the N. C. B. P. There should also be a habitat management timeline specific to the eleven acres that shows that year one implementation will include the removal of all hedge rows and tree lines and then outline the schedule specific to the eleven acres from there. Implementation agreement. An implementation agreement needs to be provided, which includes the following. Identify all persons that will be involved in implementing the N. C. B. P. with individuals responsible for funding and implementing the plan clearly identified specifically. Identify the timeline for implementation of measures required by the N. C. B. P. for both the eleven acres. That Tykos will be paying for in the additional lands that make up at least twenty-five acres of contiguous grassland bird habitat management. Specify the, the funding available for and dedicated to implementation of the plan and describe the method of assurance or guarantee that the funds will be available as necessary for both the eleven acres that Tykos will be paying for and the additional lands that make up at least twenty-five acres of contiguous grassland bird habitat management. The implementation agreement should be signed by all parties identified in part two A. of this letter. And then the last one was just, uh, financial assurances. So those are the comments that you, the applicant had a meeting today with the, uh, Magnolia Trust who operates the mitigation site. And if you'd like, I'll let you speak to.
Yeah, sure.
Status of that.
So really, so the majority of the points, like for example, you know, images of the, showing images of the site and other items were already addressed in the letter. So it's really have our response. Many of the comments, uh, our response would just be as a point to the existing D. E. B. was already stated. Some of the effects that they're asking for, um, some of the items, for example, the, uh, the hedge removal, the site has already been removed or the hedges have already been removed. And some of the existing hedges that are not removed are actually used by the bird, by the habitat. So that's why they cannot be removed. That's needs to be clarified to the, to D. C. So there are a couple of points where we just need to push back and say, and give reasoning why the condition is such. But really, the site as a whole is already approved by D. C. So we really, we only utilize a portion of the, of that larger property that is being mitigated, which as a whole has already been approved, which is also relates to the financial assurance, the whole site has, you know, there's a, is essentially assured, there's a financial backing. It's not just for the eleven acres that we are purchasing. So some of their questions really just, in our opinion, just needs clarification, um, to, to move forward.
Do you see this as a good thing?
This is, yeah, I'd say this is a positive. It's, this is a very routine response that you would get and it's just D. E. C. saying, we're not gonna sign off on the application being complete until these questions are answered to our satisfaction. The kicker we have is it took D. E. C. almost two months from the time this was submitted to come back with this notice with these handful of questions. So, you know, our concern is that in the event the board doesn't grant the extension request, the likelihood of us getting D. E. C. to issue the incidental take permit and pull a building permit prior to December eighth, when the site plan expires, is gonna be virtually impossible, given the fact we, we have no control over the D. E. C. timeline. But, but we do look at this recent notice, although it's a notice of incomplete application, as a positive in the sense that what's detailed in that notice is not insurmountable by any stretch of the imagination.
Yeah, but I welcome speaking of everybody when I say, I think probably the big question is, we're not gonna have you here again this year, next year, this time with the same situation.
No, no, this, this is literally the last.
That's whatever, in my mind, anyway, on what everybody else.
Well, I have other issues as well. I mean, if you look at the industry standards, this project's almost four years old. So I think that there may be areas that need to be updated based on the information that we hear from solar, um, solar industry. If in fact this is going to be approved, I think the options that were presented at last meeting, getting the building permit and having it, that way you don't have to resubmit if it is not approved. I mean, if this is not approved by next year. Yeah, I mean.
Right. No, I appreciate your concerns and nobody has a crystal ball.
That was, that was one thing. Uh, I mean, it's because of Laura, we could put a condition on this if we did go for it. Yeah, hey, this is it, don't come back, you know?
But I don't think that would happen.
That's why I'm asking that question.
Yeah, and I think that's an important question.
When I, I think, I think that would be acceptable to the applicant because this is literally the last step before, when I say the last step, it's just buttoning up the loose ends with D. E. C. over the incidental take permit. And once that's done, they are ready to move forward.
So what's your response to my question about the, uh, meeting the industry standards? They say that these solar panels are much more progressive now than they were six months ago. So that would mean that what is identified in your project is outdated.
But I would argue that's not necessarily.
I don't need to argue, I'm just.
No, no, or I would respond to use that term, that, that it would not have a significant or an impact on the building, on the site plan. So, so it's correct that, you know, solar modules are more efficient, they're, they can produce more energy, but we would, but the, the dimensions are relatively similar, they're maybe marginally larger.
Impact on other aspects of the engineering of your project.
The footprint would be the same. No, so the footprint would be the same, um, so, and, and the kind of material, the physical aspect would be very much the same as, as in the site plan we submitted.
The production as well?
Yeah.
Like none of that's changing?
Right.
If anything, you know, will it be a better panel?
Yes.
Because it's new.
Yeah. But because also the interconnection, you know, has a limit, so we cannot, you know, generate significantly more and feed more into. So what, it would make the project more efficient potentially, um, but it would not change the material aspect of it. Uh, so the inverters, inverted location, um, the tracking, um, wrecking, that would all, all be the same, yeah.
Where's the town with the decommissioning plan on this?
Yeah.
Was that discussed three years ago or is that upcoming?
That has to be done yet, doesn't it?
The decommissioning, I think that would have been taken care of at the time of the approval, the original approval.
I haven't seen it.
But that's really not, we don't have a say in that.
We don't have a say, but we do have a say in approving a project that the town has no benefit from.
Well, the decommissioning plan really should change because, you know, if you say in four or five years, the whole, these new panels they're bringing in got value for a little rekind. So the numbers are, that's gonna change.
How much, what is the, uh, budget of this project? The overall budget?
What, what do you mean?
Like, is it five million, six million?
The construct, the cost to construct it?
Yeah, the project cost.
It's about, you know, eight, eight, ten million.
Eight to ten million. And how much of that is from, uh, NYSERDA, New York State?
That, you know, so from that, we just, we get the recs, we sell the recs, um, over time, so that's the revenue stream. That says, that's really, so it says no incentive from the.
I understand the revenue stream, but that's different than the overall cost. When you build a house, you, it costs you a half million dollars.
Right. So there's no incentive from NYSERDA taking off, you know, the cost. So that's just, the purchase is part of the.
So your project is, your cost of your project to build it is eight million?
I, I don't know if you know that yet because.
How can you not know that?
Well, I think that the range is, yeah.
Well, yeah, but you have to have some base price. I mean, we've had other solar companies come in here and they told us exactly what they were, the cost of the project and how much of that cost was going to be impacted by monies from NYSERDA. So that's why I'm asking the question.
I guess it's maybe a mis, if I'm understanding, is, is there, is there, are they covering part of the cost of construction? You get the sale of, they get a guaranteed sale, a purchase of what they produce. That's where they're banking.
So that's just the revenue, that's, yeah, that's definitely part of, um, of why we have the surety to move forward with it.
But you, you, you're telling me you don't know how much your solar panels and the construction is gonna cost you?
Majesty.
Ten, it is eight to ten million?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
And so we would, so we can update that.
Well, no, I believe that was never presented, so I was just curious comparing it to some of the other projects that we've had come in.
I think they had variable amounts on them too because.
Well, yeah, with the NYSERDA, yeah.
I mean, Baltimore, they changed their panels.
Yeah.
Which actually.
Yeah, but I'm looking for baseline.
Down, downsized the footprint too.
Yeah, we, we know that there's going to be changes and modifications as, by the time you start, yeah, so, but the bottom line is, that's what you're starting with.
Yeah, maybe happy to get back to it, to, to you on that, you know, if you wanna look for a very specific number.
Well, no, I just want the board to be aware of the number.
Uh, as far as the decommissioning goes, uh, like I say, that's not our bidding, so we can't get into that.
No, but I think we should know what it is. We don't have the authority to approve it, disapprove it, but I think it makes a difference as to what it is. And that was done?
I'm, I'm speculating right now, I apologize.
Yeah, well, we don't know, you know, so don't fail.
Yeah, I think, I'm thinking it would have been addressed at the time the site plan approval was approved in, say, twenty twenty-one. So I think that's something we can look up and get, get to you. We can just, you know, look it up and send me what it is.
Hey, uh, one other thing that, uh.
Just to cover, we, we do have an email from twenty-one with the decommissioning plan.
Thank you.
I can fill out both here.
What I'm saying, it's really to your benefit to update it because the project's getting kind of a little so far.
Right.
You know? Because my understanding, the initial first seven years, the panels have value and then they, they don't have value.
Right, right.
So, um, you haven't started paying on that decommissioning that had.
No, I don't believe so.
Nope.
So, so, okay.
So they grow.
All right, so that hasn't been enacted yet, the decommission.
I think that has to be in place before they get their building permit.
Yes.
Okay, so there's no problems, so there's no issues with that.
Is there a amount there?
Oh, I'm not gonna sit here and.
Okay.
One other, one other point, uh, I think, uh, we sent an email to Jackie. As a result of this, we've had, town has had considerable legal expenses we have to cover.
Okay.
And we asked for, uh, four thousand dollars for a legal to cover, an escrow.
That's for expenses that have been incurred?
As a result of, we have, you have a fair amount of time into this, you know?
Okay.
Over the, um, six, seven months, yeah. And so we would like to have a, an escrow for the legal expenses.
Is it an escrow or would it be if they're passed, because ordinarily, in my experiences, if the municipality wants to have the applicant pay for some fees, whether it be engineering, legal or otherwise, they'd set up an escrow upfront and then those bills would be, you know, they'd be billed against that escrow account?
That's what we're trying to do.
But if they're for bills that have already been incurred and paid, the only.
No, they're not, they're, they're current bills as a result of renewing.
They're not paid?
Yes.
There's no money to pay. That's why this issue.
Short of the town taking it out of.
Yeah.
Um, paying it directly out of pocket.
Okay.
So we, we sent an email.
No, I, I, I remember hearing that. Is that?
Handle this.
Well.
Some of those bills have been paid.
Or have they some been paid?
Those have come in, those have been paid. No.
Okay, so they basically paid out of pocket by taxpayers, correct?
Yeah, so if it's, if it's not a true escrow, I think what I'd ask or if the board's willing to do it is provide the bills that you want reimbursement for that have been paid. You can redact whatever you want, just so it can be reviewed internally and then we'll figure it out.
Um, we're the wrong board to be giving an answer on that. What's your thought?
You'll have to call me.
Huh?
You can call me.
I can call in?
That's Mr. Jeff Russo, who's our.
Town's.
Okay, that, that's fine, I mean, that's something, just because some of it's already happened, it's a little different than paying an X number of dollars and then it's a fees or, you know, expenses.
It's only a small amount that's been paid.
Okay, but I mean, that's something we can.
We have invoices coming for a fair amount of time. Uh, and I can tell you, I accrued a decent, uh, invoice on this.
Yes, I know.
Okay. So I guess I'm just looking for reassurances, um, and am I wrong on this, Jeff?
Yeah.
Reassurances that this will be paid?
Yeah, I, it will be paid before the project's approved.
Okay, nice.
One way or the other.
Okay.
Just like the, uh, the, the decommissioning plan as well as the, uh, pilot and all those other issues.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine, I'm happy to reach out, we'll, you know, talk about it, get it figured out.
All right, I just wanted to have that discussion.
Appreciate it.
Because like I say, we had sent an email in and we hadn't had a response, I don't think we have a response on this, on this. Okay. Anybody else have any other questions? I mean, I, I think we've covered our concerns in most part. If we did a resolution, would you like to put that condition on it that, Bobby, just hand me something and I'll read, I'll read this. The condition that this will be their third and final extension? Okay. Everybody, okay, well then if that, that be the case, uh, if everybody's agreeable, I'll read the resolution, do a vote on it. Okay.
Well, don't you want to also put in there that the legal, uh?
Well, that's, Jeff's gonna, you know, that's.
Yeah, we'll work with them, but I think, I, I don't know if you wanna put a condition on it.
No, I just didn't have that, that's not our, we're the wrong board on that. I think. Okay, resolution granting additional one-year site plan approval extension. Whereas Tykos Energy and or Hanaquay Solar Facility LLC, the applicant submitted a site plan application, the application, the town, the Baltimore Planning Board, the planning board, as of, at the November nineteen, twenty nineteen, planning board meeting. And whereas the planning board approved the application by resolution at the planning board's meeting on December ninth, twenty twenty one. And whereas the applicant requested a one-year extension of the approval and the planning board granted the applicant extension request, the resolution at the planning board's meeting on December eighth, twenty twenty-two, the first extension. And the applicant requesting an additional one-year extension of the approval and the planning board granted the applicant extension by resolution, the planning board meeting on August eighth, twenty twenty-three, the second extension, such that the second extension expired on December ninth, twenty twenty-four. And whereas the applicant had requested the planning board to grant an additional one-year extension of the approval by letter from the applicant's counsel dated April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, stating that the New York Department of Environmental Conservation recently changed its citing requirements for the mitigation partial required for the issuance of applicant's pending incidental take permit application. And whereas due to NYF D. E. C.'s changes to its citing. And whereas due to NYSEDC's changes to its citing requirements, applicant is now required to locate a mitigation parcel within Green County, the county in which the solar project, the subject of the application will be located, which has in turn required entirely new preview, review process by the NYSEDC of the incidental take permit. And whereas notwithstanding that the applicant has not yet obtained a building permit nor commenced construction of the project, the site plan has not otherwise been changed since the planning board issued the approval. And whereas the town board, the Town of Baltimore, has delegated its authority to grant extensions for site plan approval to the planning board to town code 112-36. And whereas the planning board may issue the third extension in its discretion, now therefore be it resolved that the site plan be extended for an additional one-year period on December 9th, 2024, such that it shall expire on December 9th, 2025, unless otherwise extended, with the condition that this will be their third and final extension.
I think, I mean, if you wanna reread that, I mean, unless otherwise extended, and then you say.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, well, yeah, so omitting that, so we're putting the condition on. All right, well, do I hear a motion accept this, or?
Make a motion to accept the resolution for a site plan extension.
Do I hear a second on it?
I'll second it.
Frank, second it. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, so, so one nay?
Yeah.
Okay, nay from Ann Marie.
Well, thank you, everybody.
So your, your resolution is passed, you have the extension, good luck. I do hope.
Not to see me again.
No, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Jackie will come back anytime.
That's right, it's not me.
Jackie though, yeah. We've enjoyed working.
All right, I'll let her know, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Not for that.
Was the building from Matt B. for that project?
Um, the last one, the one up on the hill was a hundred and fifty thousand, and they ran over time wise, so they had to.
I think that would have been beneficial to the town?
Well.
They got to get their.
Well, no, the, the one up on the hill, it stopped.
Right.
With the extension, I think, not, don't quote me on it, but it was, what about?
My point is, instead of the extension, that's what I was trying to say.
Extension would have cost the town money by the time we went through all that, you know? Hopefully they can move forward with the building permit.
I will say.
And. I mean, the permit looks pretty good.
Yeah.
Thanks for that. Okay, moving along. Okay, come on up now.
I think Alan was afraid after the last thing.
Tell you just what's transpired since we were here last. I talked to clerk for Town Kusaki. She says they have Delaware Engineering on board.
Yep.
To look things over. And so I spoke with Mary Beth and asked her if she would, if they would be willing to take this on from Town of Baltimore's angle, you know? And she said that would be doable. So I don't, I don't, I'm trying to think, we had this discussion where we were at last month. But anyway, that's what's happened, is I talked to Delaware Engineering.
About the water shed, correct?
About the, the project in general, you know? Which would also be covered by that, you know? The, the way it lays, it does go right down to the watershed of Kusaki there. So what I'd like to do, assuming everybody's agreeable, is ask for a five thousand dollar escrow. Talked to Mary Beth on that, she said that was, she was looking for. And then once they sign on, you can get all the, you'd have to be in touch with her to get her whatever she needs for her view.
Okay, now who, who would write up the agreement? I guess is the question.
Not sure exactly, I guess we'd have to be in touch with her and see how they wanna handle that, because they're the ones that are gonna be doing the work.
Okay, yeah, no, the attorney for Town Kusaki wrote the, the escrow agreement, that's why I was asking that.
Okay. What's your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think at this juncture, if there's gonna be attorney work on it, there's probably gonna need to be an attorney escrow account as well.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
And I don't, I don't know off the top of my head what that looks like, but, you know, it's certainly an option, if there's gonna be attorney work on it.
I know, Jeff, I believe you would like to have an escrow separate from the engineering.
It's not necessary, for reasons I don't know. Their selves have tagged, when I receive checks, they would be on it, it would say legal, it would say engineering. And those are the accounts I drew up. Now, I would like to have, it could be one account that does both.
They're doing, they're doing one account in Kusaki, you know, and I, I haven't had any engineering bills yet, but the legal.
It would seem to be simpler, you know?
Yeah.
So what we'll have to do then is, if you could give that some thought.
Yeah, sure.
As to what you might expect.
I mean, I could send you a copy of what Kusaki wrote up.
I hate to take.
Don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Love to borrow.
I think it would be appropriate to ask that the estimates for both the engineering and the legal be, you know, provided so that the escrow account, you know, deposit would be sufficient, roughly.
Right.
Right.
Okay, well, I'll reach out to Mary Beth and, yes, she can send something to you.
Yeah, and the agreement would be great if the board is gonna put together.
Sure.
Yeah, and.
She's seen me on it.
Then, you know, so we can get you a number.
Okay.
And we'll get that established, and then you'll have to correspond with them for whatever they need as far as the engineering area.
Okay.
If they move forward from that.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
All right, thanks.
Have a good night.
Okay.
How are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good, happy to have you brought my end here.
Yep.
Scott Lansing, and thank you very much for the opportunity to present. We, okay, you know, we're not looking for, for approval, the, our understanding of this next step is, we provided all the documentation. Scott, it gives an opportunity for Scott to go through the, and answer any questions. And then our understanding of the next step is for the planning board to put together an advisory report back to the town within forty-five days of the referral, so within like the next two weeks. So what our goal for us today was really to be able to just kind of present everything.
I, I don't see that timeline, maybe I'm wrong.
I'm, I don't think that time.
That was just based on the town, our, our interpretation of the way the town code reads, that it's forty-five days from the, from the referral. So our goal was to.
From referral.
From the referrals from the town board, correct? And what is the planning board supposed to provide in that forty-five days?
Just an advisory report, right?
An advisory report on your presentation?
Sure, if you don't mind, perhaps I can show you the project, go through my understanding of the code.
The one thing I'd like to say is, how can we provide an advisory report when all this needs to be looked over by a professional, by an engineer? Scott, on behalf of this town.
Sure, sure.
And that timeline, I don't see happening in forty-five days. Well, we.
All right.
Here, as she was saying, this step of the game, we're gonna be putting together our comments on what they have given us so far. And, you know, the PDFs that we got, the maps that we're gonna see. And there's a list of items that are in our codebook that we should just line item, go right down the list, and check them off, and make our comments on it. I mean, if there's something missing, our comment's gonna be, you know, no plan presented to us.
What about the water, is that on this?
That's gonna, that's gonna be in this as well. So right now, there's been no plans for water.
Right.
So our comment's gonna be, there's no plans to bring water to the project. And it's just our, it's just what we see, what they presented to us. It's nothing personal, it's what we, you know, we overlooked what you guys conceptually drew up.
Yeah.
And we got comments.
Yeah.
And we'll just go down the line comments, and it's not binding or holding to anybody, it's just our initial findings on what they're proposing. So, I mean, it's basically, you got two, A and B, huh?
Okay, so after we give our comments, I'm just, I want everyone on.
Well, I don't know who's gonna write the advisory report.
Yeah, I know.
And who's taking notes and putting this in a nice letter to Jeff. I mean, it could be something that could be written after the fact, and we'll get our minutes down and our talking points.
All right. Okay, so that, just so everyone listening, that, our advisory report goes back to the town board.
For review.
For review.
Yep.
Okay, what's the next step?
Well, next step, we, we can just get right into it, we can start, you know, the, the proposal's conceptually sound and that it conforms with accepted design principles and the proposed functions. And the first thing they pick out is roadways and pedestrian systems. So as you, we look at the plans, of course, the plans are over there. They could be up here. You know, we can, if you, if you look the plans over, if you got any comments about that, about the roads and stuff. I mean, I looked it over, I got comments.
But you don't think we need to have an engineer?
Not at this point. That'll be coming.
Yeah.
You know, from what I could see on the plans, you know, you got your buildings, you got your roads. And as far as the roads are concerned, we don't have enough information, detailed information, to determine, to make the call on that, if it's conceptually sound. Mainly because I, I don't understand, is this road gonna remain private, is it gonna be public?
It'll be private, private road.
Private road.
Correct.
You still have to have it for fire apparatus and placement of hydrants. From your sketch plans, I can't see if those, we would need an engineer to tell us if those are acceptable. You know, placement of the hydrants with the roads, with the appropriate turnarounds. So for the first question, we were unable to determine if those are gonna remain as they're drawn. So that would be our first answer to the first one. Second one, I don't see sidewalks or anything, I don't know what the pedestrian systems mean in our codebook. So unable to answer that, so and that'll, that'll be our response to the board, we can't answer that first one. The second one here is land use configuration. Where I can see, it all looks good to me, I mean, they, they used every little bit of flat space they got to tuck a building in. So I really didn't have any comments on that land use configuration. Open space systems. I didn't see any open space systems on there, on your plans. What you have put, set aside, two point seven five acres in perpetuity, I can't say the word. You know, for open space for the occupants of the buildings. Is that on those plans?
Yeah, we, we have approximately seven point one seven acres of open space.
Somehow you wrote thirty-four percent of ten acres as seven acres, and I don't understand that either.
Yeah, no, there was, there was a error on the percentage, but the amount of, amount of open space.
But it's not shown on the conceptual plans.
We, we can go through that, if you don't mind, perhaps.
You can bring the maps up here and show us.
Yeah, I, I can go through.
Where the open space is, and what you're setting aside.
Yeah, and our, our understanding of the process and where we are in the process, if it pleases the board, I can go through kind of my notes and presentation for the project, if that's okay?
Well, I guess so, but it's not shown, is it?
We have, we have a bunch of our maps here to share with the board, this is, these are the existing conditions, so we have a question right now. Again, if it pleases the board, we wouldn't have to go through the presentation that we prepared, if you'd like to continue the discussion.
Come back to my question is, are we qualified to review this stuff and answer all those questions?
Well, to me, it would be a highlighted spot on the map that this is the area we're gonna clear out, we're gonna make it for recreation and picnicking for the people in, in this district, I mean, that's what it says in our codebook that they have to do.
And, and just, just to answer your point, John, if the advisory opinion is that we need more information and we'd like to, like, for example.
That would be our opinion.
Yeah, engage an engineer or.
But if they have it here and they wanna show it to us, they can.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Okay, if, if I, if I could first, I'd love to talk about the process or our understanding of the, the process that the town has. The town does have Article Eight for Plan Development District provisions, and we're using that as kind of a guide or the, the instructions for how to proceed with everything that we are progressing with on this Plan Development District. The, the steps in the process for this are quite long, we're, we're at the very early stage of this project, quite honestly. We did provide our initial submission to the town board for sketch plan. That sketch plan gets referred to the planning board, and the planning board provides an advisory report back to the town board. If the town board accepts that, then we go to a formal application to the town board. The town board then provides a referral back to this planning board again, for another advisory report back to the, back to the town board. And then we go to the town board for the formal Plan Development District ordinance approval. And then we come back to this planning board again for site plan review and approval. So in, in my, my opinion, my interpretation of the code, you know, given that we're sketch plan, which is a very, very early stage of the project, I don't think we're quite at the point yet where we're, where we're talking about specific grades or pipe sizes or things about nature. That's, you know, that's definitely a site plan review issue and we get a full nitty gritty engineering. So in my, my opinion, as far as getting a professional on board, it's totally up to the town for what they wanna do. But as far as professional review at this point in time, I think that, that could come at a later date if this board feels that it's appropriate. And my interpretation of Article Eight, Section 112-41D5, which is the criteria that we just read, A and D, you know, to me, those seem like the, maybe more of a, a, a general advisory back to the town board on how the, how the planning board feels about the plan. And those are my interpretations, but I just wanted to convey that we are very early in the process, we have a lot more to do, a lot of design, a lot of engineering.
Hey, just a second.
Can I keep the old system going?
There they go, yeah.
So, so that is.
I think we have one more.
So, so we have to say that we're really in the process, we're willing and eager to do whatever work this board asks us to, to do. We just wanted to kind of outline the process, again, it is a six-step process, we're at step two in that six-step process right now. And we have some, some distance to go on the project. As far as the, the plan itself, if it pleases the board, I'd love to go through the presentation, that's. Okay, but as far as our objective this evening, as, as was mentioned, we are looking for that advisory report back to the town board. The code does outline forty-five days, we're about thirty, thirty days in. So if the, if the board can put together that advisory report, that would be, that would be great. We are, again, looking to advance through the, the process. As far as the, the existing conditions on the parcel, just to go through that quickly, I think everybody's generally familiar with the location of the parcel, we're about ten point nine two acres located on New York Route 144 in the Hudson River. It is a town with residential, the existing uses, we do have the marina, the restaurant, the yacht club, the clubhouse with the pool, the docks. There is a boat launch as well, there is a maintenance building, associated parking, boat storage, and there's also an existing residence up by Route 144. For the parcel itself, we have done a site survey and a wetland donation, so we do have good, hard data as far as the property boundaries, the photography on the site, the weapons on the site, and basically the geometry of the, of the parcel. What is being proposed is basically the retention of the existing structures except for the metal building that is to be removed. There is a slight realignment of the driveway down on the bottom of the parcel. And what is being proposed is a mixed-use Plan Development District. So we are keeping the existing restaurants and the yacht club and the clubhouse, but we're adding a residential component to a multifamily residential component. Overall, what that is comprised of are fifty multifamily residential units, condominium, apartment, or it just came up today, actually boutique hospitality venue. In that, as this project advances and the applicants are talking to different builders and getting different ideas, you know, early enough in the process where we can think about different things and other ones thought to include the boutique hospitality aspect as a potential use of the unit. So same number of units, just a different, different. So same number of units, just, uh, a different, uh, different aspect of how that uses them. As far as the units themselves, as was mentioned, we did take a look at, uh, the different flat areas on the parcel. We identified two flat areas kind of up, uh, towards the top of the, uh, parcel. And then down below, uh, there's obviously a flat area down there that, uh, that can be utilized. Up on the, um, uh, the upper, uh, area, we do have, uh, ten units, uh, more of a townhouse style type of unit. Uh, six units, uh, in this area, and then another, uh, four units off another, let's switch to the color one, so it pops out a little more for everybody to see. Uh, so this is, these are the six units and then the four units in this area. Uh, those are nestled in the flat area, work with the topography. Uh, they should have, uh, good views out, uh, towards, uh, towards the river, uh, and driveways and, uh, garages, uh, associated with those. Will be attached garages, uh, with those, uh, with those units. Uh, the next, uh, next units are the units down in the bottom, those will be nestled at the bottom of the bank. Uh, those are four buildings, ten units each. Uh, those would be three stories in height, uh, the previous ones would be two stories in height, so they'd be three stories in height. First floor would be, uh, garages and then living and living, uh, two, two living floors over the, uh, the top of that. Uh, those would, um, uh, similar to the last one, they would work with the, uh, work with the grade, uh, grade wise, as far as, uh, the driveway coming down in. Uh, we have the parking on, uh, somewhat of a lower level down for, uh, probably the other commercial structures, and this would be slightly elevated in this area. So there would be a slight, uh, difference in grades. Again, the, uh, the garage is on the first floor with, uh, living floors above the, uh, above the garages. And as far as parking, we, uh, do meet the, uh, town's parking code, uh, for the various uses, we added all those up. Uh, does require two hundred and thirty-four spaces, and, uh, we are providing two hundred and thirty-four spaces. Uh, we are providing a, uh, a trail connection. Uh, there's, uh, some state lands, some open space area towards the, uh, the north. We are proposing a trail that we enter through and, uh, connect over to, uh, to that area. Um, as far as some other things on the project, there, uh, there was, uh, uh, just like to bring this up, cause I, I do think it is important, there, uh, there were some questions about, uh, these structures, the elevation of these structures, uh, how they relate to one forty-four. Uh, view shed, uh, there were some current concerns by neighbors, excuse me, across, uh, Route one forty-four about how this might affect their view of the river. And we have, uh, prepared, uh, profile views of each one of the, the major structures. And, uh, the str- this is the, uh, structure, I'm sorry, fifteen, uh, cedar lane. Uh, so this would be, um, the one that would have, uh, potentially the, uh, the most impact or thought would be the most impact as far as any sort of visual screening. Uh, the profiles show that with the existing vegetation and the topography, there's, uh, absolutely no change of the, uh, significantly change in the, uh, visual, um, visual screening or aspect of that. Uh, next one would, uh, up would be the one closest to Route one forty-four. Uh, so, uh, this one is, uh, uh, next to, next to one forty-four on the, uh, uh, that would be the, the west side of the, of the driveway, uh, and then the east side of Route one forty-four, so kind of nestled in there. Uh, that one, I, at the, at the town board meeting, I did state that I thought that, uh, the roof on the second floor might be visible from Route one forty-four, but when we actually mapped it out, did the profiles, and, uh, laid everything out on there and the grades, um, actually did, it is, it is pretty about level with below Route one forty-four. So it's less of an impact line, I thought, on that, but again, no, no significant impact. Uh, trees and vegetation have more of a, uh, a screening factor, uh, there than, uh, than the structure would. And, uh, last but not least, are the, uh, the buildings down, uh, down in the bottom. And as, uh, as, uh, I think anybody can estimate on that, there's, uh, zero visibility from Route one forty-four or of the upper, uh, upper, uh, elevations to any sort of visual of that. Um, so that is, um, essentially the, uh, the application, again, we did go through, uh, the code, which I, I did want to, uh, uh, outline everybody as far as, uh, utilities, water, storm and sewer. We do have a plan that we submitted that, um, shows the, um, uh, conceptual utilities on, uh, the parcel. Again, these are, uh, these are, uh, concepts in that, you know, the water and sewer would serve all of the individual, uh, units, would go up through Route one forty-four, connect to the existing sewer. And then, uh, the water is, uh, extended, uh, to connect to, uh, the municipal system. Uh, the applicants are in coordination with, uh, the town and helping to extend the water to this area. It's not anything that they can work something out with the town, they're finding that, um, themselves to extend that water to serve the project. So we do feel that we have both water and sewer, uh, utilities to decide. Stormwater, quite honestly, is very easy, we're right next to the river. Uh, it's, uh, it's definitely a fourth order stream, uh, so something that all we need to take care of, uh, uh, water quality. So stormwater would be a very easy thing to, uh, to do for the parcel. So, you know, going through what, um, this, uh, this board is tasked with as far as the, uh, advisory reports to the town board, uh, we feel we do have answers to all those, at least on the sketch plan level. Uh, again, we'll, we'll be back for formal, we'll be back for site plan as well, so we'll be, um, much more work that needs to be done and a lot more detail and, uh, professional engineers from the towns end. Uh, we'll be involved to review the work that we put together and, uh, we'll, we'll figure all that out, uh, at that, at that particular time. As far as sketch plan, you know, we, we feel that we're in great shape for this board to provide that advisory report to the town board. So, that's all for, for that amount.
Well, we are tasked, tasked from the town board to go through this list. And we'll continue. Um, as I was saying before, open space doesn't appear to be defined that I could see. Mind you, our PDFs that were given to us, we're just trying to look on the computer, we're trying to zoom in. You may have something here tonight. And if you do, that, that I said we didn't see it, you got it, show it to us so we can get, you know, so in our report, we can say they proposed a proposal for that.
We did deliver a full set of drawings to the town board, um, or to the town hall, uh, uh, at the last meeting, and there was one that should be available to you.
Okay.
And, and on that note, if you're sure if it's, uh, the board requires a number of copies, we'd be more than happy to provide them. We, we provided what was requested, but, you know, whatever the town needs.
So, mind you, when you hear this, like drainage system's the next one on here. Obviously, we're not at that stage to determine drainage systems or, you know, it's, it's not defined in your sketch plans, wouldn't expect it to be. But that's our, gonna be our response back to the town board. Okay? So.
If you could, if you could possibly back up for one minute, I'm sorry, as far as the, uh, the green space, I'm, I'm sorry, I failed to mention that when I did the, uh, presentation. As far as the, uh, the green space overall, we have the, uh, it's about seventy percent green space overall in the parcel. As far as, uh, active passive open space, we have a lot of the lighter green areas, uh, right by the riverfront, and it would be available for residents.
I didn't see anything in our code book requesting green space or anything like that. What we got in the code book is, um, that open space, where you're gonna be giving away your property to, to make, create this open space for this project. Um, and, and I know it sucks, but that's what it, it says it right in here. The common space property and planned development district. Common open space totaling not less than twenty-five percent and up to fifty percent of the total planned development district shall be provided in perpetuity. That's why I asked, you know, and that works out to two point seven five acres. That's where I thought it should've been shown on the map, where you're gonna create that. And what you're giving up.
Yeah, and as far as, uh, my understanding of impermeability is that it needs to be dedicated as open space on the plan and, uh, identified as open space for long-term, not something that's open space today, but, uh, tomorrow, so impermeability, meaning that it's.
Forever.
I'm believing, yeah, I'm believing it needs to be dedicated to the town or filled over to the town, but it doesn't need.
It could be if you wanted it to.
Sure, yeah, yeah, but I, yeah.
But, but the, the property owner association, uh, for long-term ownership, they, they're responsible for maintaining the common open space as well.
Correct, the owners of the park.
Part of the code. Alright, uh, scale of elements. Uh, let's see, so what I have down here for the scale elements is, and of course, code book has them thirty feet apart. I notice the bottom four buildings, if you, if I use your scale and try to measure up, they're very close together. They don't quite meet the requirements, so, um, I don't know how accurate all the scaling is there.
Yeah, the scaling should be accurate, what, there's a setback department for building to building?
Yes, thirty feet.
Thirty feet, I, I.
Yeah.
I was almost checking, but I'm very certain we have thirty.
It's in the same section, where you referenced, uh, eight units per acre. It's in that section there for the multi, um.
We'll, we'll, we'll confirm that, but I'm.
Yeah, multifamily dwellings. Let's see where we got down here, drainage system, scale elements. No, okay, so that, that takes care of A for us. And we get into B. There are adequate services and utilities available or proposed to be made available in the construction of the development. Well, I guess we have to define the services, is what we got. Well, first one everyone keeps asking about is the water. Do you have a written proposal for water for this project? Are you going public water or are you going private well?
Uh, we are not going private well, this would, would be public water, we're stretching our public water. Uh, as I mentioned, the, uh, the, the applicants are working with the town to try to extend the water down to this area, to this project and to the area. Uh, if they, uh, if they are not successful in, in coordinating funding of that with the town, it is something that they'll, they'll do it.
Town doesn't have a water department, do we? No. Um, you guys submitted the use of water for your project, but as you're including the town, I guess now that, now the use of water is gonna be much greater. Has anyone reached out to Ravina and, and say, can, are you, have adequate supply of this water?
It, it's my understanding that the, uh, Ravina does have adequate supply, pressure flows, uh, for the project, something that we're continuing to work on and coordinating, uh, that is something that, uh, the project would rely on.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I believe the water was a condition that the town board put on their, um, resolution. Was it, Jeff?
Yes, in essence, if water doesn't exist for this project, there is no project.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah.
Alright, so that's the condition the town board's putting on, because under multifamily dwellings, they can have private wells. They have sewers, which is great, because it changes from eight units to four units. And being that they're on the river, firefighting, you could do hydrants to the river and have sufficient water for firefighting. We had another project where they didn't have water and they had private well, and they had to put in stock tanks, say, you know, thousands of gallons of water for firefighting. Um, so I didn't know, cause we don't have a written proposal or know what you guys are planning or thinking. Our comments back to the town is no, no proposal for us to review. Sewer, you say you got existing sewer, I'm sure it just needs to be upgraded. Um, with the seven buildings, six buildings, are you doing one common pump station? And have gravity flow to it?
Uh, yeah, that is a thought at the time, yes. We could also do individual grinder pumps, but, uh, it may be more cost effective than one central station. There would be a pump system, as it is now.
Electric, no utility. You, um, in your EAF, you put in estimates of electric on average of what the project's gonna require. I think what's gonna need the, power company's not needing no peak demand. It's a zero degree day, you got electric heat and fifty units running. You know, maybe they got on-demand hot water heaters and they got their electric cars plugged in downstairs. You know, is that gonna overwhelm the public's system that they have? And it's, and don't, it, someone needs to reach out to the power company, tell them what's being proposed, and they can tell you, hey, we gotta upgrade our lines, they're gonna upgrade their lines. They're upgrading the substation now. It's just something that's, um, to me, it's something that should be another step that should be taken, just talking to Central Hudson. Let them know what's project got, coming up with a peak demand, not an average demand. Granted, the seeker requested the average demand, that's different. I mean, the power company's gonna wanna know what you're gonna be doing, what you're gonna be using, empowering.
Yeah, and we'd be more than happy to do that, uh, unfortunately, we, we don't have great experience with power companies wanting to cooperate and evaluate projects until they've moved through a process with the town, uh, for preliminary, sometimes getting final, uh, uh, final approvals before they'll send it to their planners and they'll do the designs and all that. Uh, you know, typically, uh, power is always available, it's just a matter of what upgrades and what's up.
Well, this is.
Typically, yes, but we just had, we had a major subdivision two years ago over on Old Kings Road where, where they got ten lots put in, and the people that they were having to fit, cause they didn't have no power already. And Central Hudson had to come in and upgrade all their lines, the whole road, just to accommodate them.
Yeah, I think, uh, that this is a smaller community, Central Hudson may be more apt to discuss this. Because you're, that, that's a big project. And, uh, it could, uh, require major change for Central Hudson lines there.
Okay.
They can only say no to you now. I mean, give them a heads up that you're, you have this.
They're not gonna say no, they're just gonna, they need to plan for it.
Yeah.
You know, whether they have to bring in, up, up the voltage, bring in better lines.
Yeah.
That's just it, you know, they, they usually want the customer, so they usually, uh, will do whatever they can to accommodate it, but, quite honestly, you know, always wanted to be bothered and tell you, uh, you got the roadways, uh, provided. But we'll, we'll do everything we can to reach out to them and, uh, get that ball moving now.
Alright, so does anyone else have anything in the category of services and utilities that they wanna discuss? Or think of?
Pretty comprehensive.
Yeah, those, you know, to me, those are all, uh, great, great comments and, uh, things that I, I feel could be included in advisory report, and you know, not, we don't necessarily have the answers, but it's something you could advise to the town board that.
But now you know the questions, you can get the answers, because it's gonna be going to them and they're gonna have to address them.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, you know, and, you know, we'll, we'll keep refining, refining, refining until, uh, we eventually, uh, hopefully get back to this board with, uh, site plan design and we get into the, the detailed engineering for everything.
Now, I also, um, uh, noticed, and I think you can see on your maps, two of your buildings appear to be on your neighbor's property.
Yeah, you say, when you pulled it up, was it on a tax?
It's on, it's on the EAF mapper, it's on the town's zoning plans, it's on the Green County mapper, and it's on their own plans there. The property of Robert Brooks comes down. This whole thing, I could show you, it's, it's right on there. If you wanted to see, I, I did a printout, if you wanna see what we got. And it's on four different maps and, including your own. So usually what I find in Green County's map, interactive map is, they usually get the shape of the property right, they might not locate it right where it belongs. And, but now that you got a different shape, I guess we need to know, uh, we're gonna need to see a survey of the property.
And, and this is a survey, we do have boundary, topography, wetland, so this is an accurate survey.
But you see your line right here, it says deed line? That's what this is. Okay, hold on. This line right here, deed line over, over and up. They come to here to a point where you do, you got a point there, but they come down. So on this guy's deed or whatever, he's gonna go north to east, back to north to west. And so this is gonna have to get addressed on whose property is that. Not that you can't buy from him, do alter lot line adjustment, it's, it's something that can be resolved, but it's something that.
And, and we can talk to the surveyors about this, they, they mapped it this way, so.
Did you have a stamp on the surveyors, did they stamp or print?
This, uh.
This was by, uh.
By Van Gilder, yes, yeah, so this is, this is their survey on our, our plan, but, uh, I will talk to, uh, Van Gilder and see on this. If they, if they drew it this way, there must've been something with the, the deed research, research on that, that they made that determination. We, we can determine after, you know, the way we, the way the, uh, boundary has been presented to us, what we're showing.
Well, I think we should be seeing, um.
That's to clarify.
It should be clarified, and then we should have been surveyor stamp on it.
Exactly. You don't wanna get to your public hearing and have someone come in and say you're building under concrete. That would be fine.
Alright, if there's nothing else, I mean, that's all the information we have to provide to town. We just gotta get it put together in a letter.
Yeah.
You know where we're at. Um, I did take some time, went through the EAF, wanna make some corrections on that as well. They're minor.
I'm still saying, without thinking that, without, instead of professional eyes on this, I think we're gonna.
We can qualify it.
Maybe it's.
Yeah, we'll qualify when we do report.
Well, for first, they wanna know that they're gonna create the district to do the project.
Yeah.
And when we get into the site plans and the blueprints, you're gonna have utility plans, life safety plans. We haven't even seen the floor plan yet for the buildings. There's a five hundred foot minimum per thing, which, I mean, everything is in the book, that you, you're sure you read, you know, you got these criteria.
What's the, um, distance from the, for the back of the buildings? Do we address that in our code?
Well, one thing that.
Well, the fire codes is gonna address a lot of that, and that's where, when we do the site plans, we get the engineers involved, and they're gonna have to address those.
Yeah.
Because they're very specific to where locations of the hydrants are gonna be.
Yeah.
And, and the turnarounds, the size of the turnarounds for the apparatus. So.
I, I was kinda looking at topography behind the buildings.
That's what, yeah. That's what, yeah. How much space is behind the?
Well, kind of, certainly, uh, stuff coming off the, the rock ledge.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, we uh, we are in the process of retaining our geotechnical engineers, they hope it destroys on the side.
Because I believe there's been, well, that coke damage is a result of, you know, being.
About fourteen years ago, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Hasn't been anything, you know.
So I, I just, I'm just.
It's something that we're certainly aware of and, and you know, that will be part of the process.
Okay.
You're gonna hit every issue on this project.
Sure. There's a lot of studies left to be done.
Well, it's, it's a top site, you know, but I mean, that could be a scary thing, yeah. So, um. Okay, um.
So a study's being done on that?
Correct.
So we have what, other two weeks to get this back?
Just wanna make sure I have that.
So you can send back. Right, we got a lead person, right?
Huh?
Who's gonna, who's gonna be writing the report? The chairman? The attorney?
I mean, I'm happy to do it, but I think it's gotta be talked about with the applicant about O S R and, and again.
We could probably draft it.
Who's gonna draft it? I, I, I'm hoping maybe you would undertake that. And I'll tell you, if we could get, I'll tell you what, your point, your point, your points are great.
Bobby and I would sit together and we draft it. Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Alright. Might not be as professional.
And then if, then, but I'd like to forward it to Laura, what you guys want?
Okay.
Yeah, the draft, yeah. Make sure we spell everything right.
But I, I still say it's gonna be very vague because there's, there's too much unknown here.
It's such like.
How many days off do you have to send it to the board?
Thirty.
From this date?
That's what, no, forty-five on the.
Forty-five.
About fifteen days out.
You've already, or, or you've beaten up thirty days of it, so.
Yeah, October sixteenth was the resolution.
Right.
So, what's the date?
October sixteenth, so that's.
That was your resolution.
That was your resolution, so it's forty-five days, so fifteen, thirty-one days.
Roughly two weeks.
Yeah, we don't have much time.
No, just to talk about the timeline ahead. Two weeks from today is the twenty-seventh.
Yep.
You guys wanna look at this one?
Our next town board meeting, is not until. Look at, I can't read too well here. Looks like the ninth of December. So, I might get a little bit wrong, but I wouldn't wanna have it just the day before either, so.
We wouldn't do that to Mr. Supervisor.
I mean, just remember the timing of the town board.
We'll get it done there by next week.
You just let me know when you're ready, I'll, I'll.
Well, I appreciate, I really appreciate the time you put in there, Bobby. Um, that's good information.
So do you have your seeker with you?
Yeah.
I, I did not.
Well, we don't have to renew it, but town board does, there's a couple items on there. Um, C one, you didn't check a box. You should check no. The reason why I say that is because you answered all the D questions already. If you said yes, you wouldn't have had to answer them all, but being that Eric did it work, we'll just say no. Also, um, D, right there, right, D two E? Three I's? Contradicted yourself somewhere. I, I wrote down, uh, stormwater will flow, you, you wrote down that stormwater's gonna flow to adjacent properties where the stormwater's gonna flow to the river. So I would have put no on that instead of a yes.
Uh, I'm sorry, you were on uh, D two.
I think uh, DE, uh, maybe.
No, you gotta write PE three, onsite stormwater management facilities and ultimately to the Hudson River.
Yeah, but they have it flowing to other properties. I thought they wrote on there.
It says onsite stormwater management facilities and ultimately into the Hudson River.
Is there a bio retention?
I'm missing something.
Yeah. Can't go right anywhere.
I know.
I had a yes, no question there. Right here.
Down below, they checked yes for well stormwater runoff lower to adjacent properties.
Yes, that's it.
Um, they're, I don't see how there's any adjacent properties other than the river.
That's why that should be.
I mean, you say that, no.
Yeah.
So it's three, the last check box, the last.
So last checked box is the back category.
Will stormwater runoff flow to adjacent properties.
Alright, uh, D one F? You marked fifty units. I believe the answer should be, uh, tell me when you get to it.
Yes, we're in.
Should be multifamily and should be six-six.
Hey, Lee, you seen any kind of stormwater retention pond out there?
Uh, no. Yes, uh, stormwater retention should not be required on this project because it discharges directly to the river, which is considered a, a fourth order stream. So basically, the way you didn't see them is that it's gonna get that far down to mitigate stormwater for purpose of the river.
They may, they may press some salt runoff.
Yeah, we are required to take care of water quality, just not water quantity, so as far as retention basin.
When you see some of the projects that are considerably smaller than this, in the hooks that are, they're not even near the river, but they have to jump through. And this can go right into the river, I just.
But we think water quality should.
My body.
Correct. So, uh, that's a much, much smaller footprint than this, we should say.
How are you treating it?
Hi, we haven't gotten that far yet, but it'll be some sort of uh, filtration, pretreatment, filtration, so.
For that amount of stormwater, huh?
Uh, yes, yeah. Well, the good news is we have a lot of impervious area already on the parcel, so it's more a function of a net increase in impervious, uh, we'll still be treating, uh, just in impervious, but the net increase will definitely.
That's about it. There was one on the bedrock, which I understand it's vertical, so I mean, if you're looking down at it, it's not acreage of bedrock, it's, it's not gonna affect much, I guess. I, I didn't quite understand on the EAF why they wanna know where the outcrops are. Um, you're not really affecting them at all, so, you know, I sort of accept that answer.
Okay, well, if you and Mary are willing to, uh.
Uh, before, we'll get you odds because they have to answer, are there outcrops of bedrock? And the answer is yes, there is, but then it goes what percentage? And they wrote, and the percentage is zero. So, is there or isn't there, you know, but you did put an explanation in there. I believe it said vertical outcrop, it's not. I don't know if D C is gonna perceive that.
Other than the big cliff behind it, I don't know whether there's.
Right, but to read it and say, yeah, there is, and how much is there? There's zero. You know, so.
What do you consider an outcrop? Thirty-foot cliff?
Of course, then you're assuming.
Spoils, spoils rock.
Okay, okay.
That's all I got.
That's a lot, I appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Okay, so.
We appreciate it.
I guess we'll, this, I think it's gonna be kinda vague because I think what we've got to work with is kinda vague, no? Did you respond? No? You just have to keep fine tone it from there, like you said, Chris.
You're calling these preliminary sketches?
Site plans?
I'm sorry, class, can I ask a question? Um, sure, it may be helpful. Is your geological study that you're doing for the cliff, will that be through doing the flat area where the versions are gonna be placed?
Correct, absolutely, yes, yeah. As part of the geotech analysis, I will take a look at the cliff, I'll take a look at the bearing capacity and soils for the buildings, so there, there would be a bunch of boards to decide, not just.
Not just me, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is this included in a flood zone?
Yeah, the, the bottom part of the parcel, yes, yes. So that's one of the reasons for the elevating of the buildings, the garages, is to get them out of that flood.
So is the restaurant, is there any building right now in the flood zone?
Uh, I believe all of them.
All of them, I would think.
Uh, I don't know if the shop is, but I read below. The restaurant, the restaurant and the ash of store.
But these new buildings are.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry, just on that, that point, sorry for being late, you may have covered this. But um, have you looked into the estimates of sea level rise in this part of the Hudson? And how, you know, whether you've raised your buildings high enough for sea level rise?
Uh, yes, yes, the flood, the flood zone for this area has been kept even where we're keeping our new buildings above that flood.
Not, not the current flood zone, but the future flood zone as the river expands, um, with the, with the climate change scenarios.
Yeah, I think that's anything of that nature, I'm not aware of any uh, calculated new values.
I think there are sites, C N Hudson used to have a website that showed that, and they might still do it, and I think the D C might have one. Or see if you can find it, it's projections of sea level rise in the Hudson Valley. There've been some very good maps on that. Because I have property in a similar flood zone, so I've looked at it.
Okay, that's it? Anybody have any other questions? Okay. Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Okay. Now, is this easier or more complicated?
Yeah.
Because we, we need to have a discussion on uh, this possible cannabis project. I believe they're looking to put some direction. We don't have anything that I know in our zoning to give us any direction.
So we do.
Those permits from the state are permissions.
We have a clause for nurtures in our code book. And first of all, you know, I couldn't read your letter, it got printed sideways that you sent us on the scan, so we didn't get the whole thing.
Okay.
But you, you were writing about that we're gonna perceive it as agricultural, and I don't think we should. Either, you know, everybody can plant corn, but you know, what I read from the state, you'll have three mature plants, three minor plants per person. Not everybody can plant cannabis. So what a little research I did, you know, there's been like fifty-two permits in the state given out, and they're all for an acre and less. They're not allowed to go over that, and there are greenhouse permits, so I believe the guy said, I didn't, wasn't part of that meeting. But if we, wasn't he starting them in a greenhouse and moving outside?
Well, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, that's what I remember.
So if that's the case, then why don't we, we have to do a site plan for it?
That's, you know, because, you gotta stop, back up a minute. This is the first project's coming to town. So we kinda gotta get a precedent on how we're gonna handle this because we don't want the whole town covered with, you know what. Um, so if you, if you just threw it in agriculture, my thoughts are that.
Put a moratorium on it.
It can go everywhere.
Yeah. So, uh.
But, until we get a code for it, let's not.
Yeah.
Take any applications. And then have the town draw up a code, it's not gonna be big.
And it has to go back to the town board for a.
Town board, they have to do that. Because um, the last time we talked about this, and we told you about the Monroe issue that they had out there. Apparently, the neighbors complained about the smell, horrendous. So, where do you put one of these things? You know, you don't wanna put it where neighborhood's gonna come after us, we're allowing it to happen.
That's why I was, you know, I don't know where the buildings are in relation to property lines, except without a site plan.
I can't find much online about any communities doing anything about this. I mean, I would also think that with, again, what I read, was one acre, you know, minimum of a thousand pounds is over a million dollars.
Yeah.
There's gotta be security, you know? You know, we should be requiring fences, if I have razor wire on or something, I don't know, you know?
So we, do we need to back up?
But that would be, you know, we don't have any code on that.
So we need, need to back up?
Yes, I think we do, because, yeah, I mean, this is, uh, like we said, if we did agricultural.
Well, there's, there's no permit for agricultural, but, but if we do it under nursery, we'll at least get a site plan and have a little control on it.
So, but we should take a extra look at that too, is that what we want it categorized as? Can we get a site plan and approve the project under nursery right now, or, okay? Is that what we wanna do though? I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
I don't think so either.
Yeah, because that, we're limited on how much acreage and everything we can control with the nursery. So we would have to go back to the town board, maybe with uh, some recommendation that.
All that, you know, there's.
As to what.
Again, the individual, the, you know, handful of clients is one thing.
Yeah.
But you're talking about commercial property, and right, I think the security issue, what about lights and all, you know, all those things are gonna affect neighbors. That's be a substantial setback.
Yeah. Also, maybe we don't want it. Maybe we want it in the commercial zone.
No, it says commercial zone. Isn't that commercial? I know it's a, it's a, what is it, like eight hundred feet above nine W, I think it's still in the commercial zone there.
Is it commercial zone?
I believe it was. We were looking at that, we briefly, we looked at that before. It's right off of nine W, kinda kitty-cornered across from Albright's. On the Carey property. So I believe it, I think it does fall in the commercial zone.
Yes, it does.
But, uh.
How far off the road is this?
It's up behind Charlie Carey's house.
I'm not sure that's still.
Yeah, that might change back there.
I'm not sure where it already lined against.
I don't think the parcels beyond those that actually are on nine W.
Well, his parcel starts at nine W.
Oh, this parcel starts on nine W?
Yeah.
Well, he never presented maps, right?
But I mean, knowing, knowing what I know of the parcel.
So we don't really even know where.
No, that's what maps are for.
Yeah, uh, but I, like I say, this is the first thing to come forward to town. We kinda oughta get it right if we can, as much as possible.
And I've heard of another one before.
So I, 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 I think if everybody's thoughts are, we send it to you. Pardon me?
We got a lot of things to revise in our town code. This is but one.
Well, can we uh, do a chapter? Basically, this is gonna, it needs to be a chapter, I think it's all in town?
Each time you revise the code, you have to have a public hearing.
Uh, well, I get.
Yeah, yeah, it acts just like a local law, you know.
Yeah, there's another local law. So if you do a chapter a month, or however you're describing it, that's, you know.
It's gonna take some research, maybe we can find out what other towns are, or how they're handling it, you know?
You don't have a coup on how other towns are doing?
Can't find anything on it.
Yeah.
Other towns don't handle it.
There's nothing, except the complaints.
Maybe the Department of State could.
That can help.
No.
I can call Association of Towns, maybe they know something. Maybe Laura knows something.
I wish.
She and I have been conversing about this the past month.
And we got over, as I said, over COVID just.
But we have somebody, but what I'm getting at is we have somebody knocking on the door, and they're looking for directions, so.
This person, was he issuing the license?
Well, we, uh, he is going to, from one understanding, be tagging off of someone else's.
How can he do that? You can't tag off on somebody else's, he'd have to have his own.
Yeah.
Because if you're on, if that license is only good for one acre, doesn't mean I get to have an acre here and acre over there.
I, I'm not sure how that works. Oh, boy.
Yeah.
It's not, I don't think it's simple unless you're really up to speed on that.
He needs to submit his license, give us the copy.
Okay, if we have.
But Rob's saying it's not his license, he's gonna be submitting somebody else's.
It's either attorney or something, I mean, the doctor's anything?
When was the last correspond, you know when the last correspondence we had in Los Angeles? Okay.
Well, we should just say to them to.
Well, we, well, you may, we'll look, leave it at this. If you, if the town board's willing to um, start moving on this and if he approaches us to, to say, hey, we, we don't have.
I can get on Google, just as well, yeah.
Well, in July, we tell three others, he wants. Well, in July, we tell three of us, he wants three small buildings to start.
Well, it's, it's pretty vague.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we don't have any real, and let's see, what's in this? Uh, otherwise everyone, but that's yours, right?
Basically saying we need to see what his license is, see what his plan is.
Well, if he, if you gain more correspondence from him, uh, well.
Yeah, I haven't received anything.
Okay, well, then we'll, maybe we'll hold out for now.
Yeah.
And let town board work on it and if he does, um, start pushing, we'll say, okay, number one, you have to show us.
Right.
How, how you can legally do that.
Right.
Without having your own individual license, because I got the feeling that he was working in conjunction, like a satellite.
So you're saying the applicant is not the licensee?
We don't know. Really have anything. This guy came in like, hands in his pocket.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That means we have some time in the meantime.
I've got my doubts that this is good for the town. I'm sorry. Well, that's why we need to address it for.
And the town board turns down having a dispensary for reasons similar to what you're describing. Are you growing, you know?
Well, maybe you could consider a moratorium, I don't know if it's legal or what, you know, if that's the case.
You're asking me a legal question?
No, I'm, I'm just saying. No, I'm just saying, maybe, maybe that's just, I don't know if that's an option or not, you know?
Yeah, I mean, can you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Consider a, a moratorium, you know?
Yeah, I have to look at that. I don't know, I don't know what that looks like. I don't know if that comes from the town board, if that comes from planning board or.
It would come from the town board. But is it legal to do?
Yeah, for the town to do that.
I gotta look into it, I don't know.
I mean, you already said you refused having dispensaries in the town.
Yeah, that was an option presented to the town board, oh, two, three years ago?
By the state, I believe it was brought back in.
Right.
Give you that option.
So if he has a license. Okay, I would think.
He opted out of dispensary.
Right, right.
Okay.
But if he has a license, I think it will be more of an issue to have a moratorium. So even a dispensary, if he already was approved for a license. Would that not present a bigger issue than if he didn't?
Well, I, I actually question whether he has a license and why would they give a license without a site? I, I, these are.
Yeah, I think that they have to have a site when they get the license, but I'm not sure.
Have a site and get a license for it.
Yeah.
There's too much we don't know.
Yeah.
That wasn't the impression I got. The impression I got was that this was gonna be a satellite for a grower.
Yeah, I remember him saying that. So is that even feasible legally?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Rapping up on that all of.
So maybe you won't come back.
But sooner, sooner or later, I think this is gonna come.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, we have too much land.
Get in the radar, you know?
Right. Okay, so then a memo also has to go to the town board.
I'll look up stuff, I, I don't know.
Do you need, do you need a memo from the planning department?
No, really.
Okay, alright.
To look up cannabis growing?
No, considering legislation.
To, yeah, to consider some type of uh, component to our zoning, identifying.
Yes, okay, I can do that. Yeah, I don't need a lawyer.
Sure now.
I could, I would like something from the attorney if you find something. Because a moratorium until we develop such a, a local law.
Okay.
Would be perhaps certainly that part of it.
You can throw that on the shelf.
She'll throw it right back to me.
No problem, sure.
Alright, okay. So if we have any correspondence from him.
Let everybody know.
Yep, and we'll address it then.
Okay.
Okay, uh, kind of eleventh hour. There you go.
I don't think I need all the papers.
I want to make sure you got the full effect of. Did this one go off?
It did. I didn't think it was necessary, but I guess.
We're just going on it tonight.
Do them all again.
If you're christening.
Let the owl know this is unnecessary.
Well, it does.
But at the moment, we're.
We're nervous, they're insecure.
There also are those. I could have my phone up here for you guys.
Okay, uh, another thing, you kinda came in, kind of eleventh hour, is uh. A guy, you know.
Excuse us, silence in the back please.
I don't have my gavel, so I can't throw it at you.
We thought you were still changing the table.
Everybody know where the team challenge building is, it'd be on Aquituck Road, if you went straight across?
Yes.
Okay.
What is it?
There, there was a teen challenge house right across from.
Oh, personal.
Uh, a guy uh, called the other day, considering turning that into uh, deli restaurants, deli slash restaurant. That is in the commercial district. I mean, commercial corridor anyway. Is there any, you think we need to weigh in on that at all?
Okay, but is that the smoking pit?
Yeah.
That wasn't a reason.
It is.
At the moment.
Right.
He's looking to relocate?
Yeah.
It's a commercial zone.
Yes, um, I believe uh, restaurants.
What about the parking? Yeah.
There's a fair amount of parking.
There's a lot of land there.
Yeah.
And he should just do a site plan.
Well, do you think he's even needs to do that? Can he just do his, um, establish his business and talk to the building department about?
He wasn't going to change anything structurally to the place because it already has a industrial kitchen in it.
Yeah.
So he just said, cause you didn't know if he needed to present it to us, so I just want you guys to see it by your own time.
The only thing is the, the traffic, I would say. Other than that.
Based on what his operation is now? I'm guessing it would be even less than what the teen challenge was. Teen challenge was, uh, cause I did some work for, definitely owned the property. It's a sizable parking lot and there's um, quite a few people and vehicles in and out, that sort of one.
Has he submitted a building project?
No.
Well, that, that's, that's the thing is.
He wouldn't have to build anything, I don't think.
It is septic if it, well.
Still, he's gonna have to do a site plan.
Yeah, I would think so, because that's, a restaurant is different than.
It's a deli.
It's an office building.
Well, a deli is a restaurant.
Well, I don't know how it, I mean, classifies if it's a full.
Shows us, it needs.
Yeah, shows us the need in the site plan. Which makes sense, I mean.
Yeah.
It's gonna be part of.
Right now, it's a restaurant, it's a deli, they have a.
Well, we got, we got restaurant and uh, takeout restaurants and they both require a site plan.
Oh, yeah, but that's right across from the old town hall in Waymans.
Right.
I'm wondering why he's moved it.
Cause it's small.
Yeah.
There's only two restaurants.
Okay, so if, if you would uh, do a letter and uh, let me know when you, you know, that we feel he needs to come in for a site planner.
Yeah.
If he's planning to proceed with that, then uh, I'll, when you know, when you have it done, I'll sign it.
Okay.
Send that to him.
Got it.
Okay, well, that answers that one.
That was the easy one.
Yeah.
Did you folks, um, have any correspondence or dialogue with the father, son who are Pakistani who are looking to build a restaurant? And the service station on nine W?
Yes.
You talking about Tima, the Tima project? Now, you talking about?
Oh, no.
This is the other one.
There was two service stations.
Right across the road from, uh, right across nine W from the uh.
Circle of friends.
Yeah, the daycare thing.
Yeah.
Well, they haven't really.
They were here.
They bought the property.
Did they buy it?
Well, they, they came in, what I could discern of their conversation, the answer is yes.
Okay, cause last time they were in, they hadn't purchased the property, you know, for you.
They weren't easy to understand.
Five acre park.
Because what we, we advised them before they bought it, to check out their sewer issue, parking, you know? There were a lot of concerns, because that, that drops off or something? Yeah, so that, they were here, like just talking preliminary stuff and we said, well, don't, you know, make sure you do this, these.
Make sure you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They were here, but they haven't presented anything.
Have, have you talked to them recently yet?
Yeah, they came in my office.
When was this?
Oh, two weeks ago.
Oh, okay.
They came in, I didn't, I had no idea. They asked to talk to me. I had no idea why they were coming in. And I said, oh, well, welcome to the walkover and that was basically my, my answer, but you have to go through the process.
I believe they didn't own the property last time they came in.
They were just getting ready to close, as I recall.
He suggested they took, get an engineer.
Yeah, before they purchased it.
Certainly do a site plan, go to planning board again, you're gonna have to do something about septic, because there's no.
Those are all the reasons why we told them to get an engineer and check out the property before they bought it.
I pretty much said the same thing you guys did then.
Yeah.
We did have uh, the other project, um, quite some time ago. Creighton Manning is the town's engineer. And they had come up with escrow and up, that's right, you just got the check. They came in eleventh hour here.
Got today.
Yesterday.
No, yesterday.
Yeah, uh, with the money that they were told a month ago that they needed to come up with. And now that they've got the escrow, now Creighton Manning can finish their review, so possibly they'll be in next month.
That's what they're hoping.
Yeah.
We'll see what, you know, the engineer can do.
Yeah, cause the site plan review, they said it's like two hundred and forty some odd pages that were submitted to them.
Oh, yeah, it's like.
It's huge, yeah.
If I could go to an earlier conversation, I, again, going back a number of years, why the planning board has identified escrow accounts as being legal? And or engineering, I think it started, because we didn't always do legal ones, we did engineering ones. And that's what we've been doing, but I don't need two escrow accounts, because that's just two more bank accounts.
That's fine.
I, you know, just an escrow account.
Yep.
For those that could be charged legal, engineering, whatever else.
Just for the project, Kurt.
For the project, if that would be easier.
Yeah, I agree. I think you're right. Okay, well, going forward, we'll just do that, like that. Okay, um. One last thing, um, wanna talk about the bird? Did you wanna have a discussion on that or?
I don't like it. Figure I'll finish the year out and resign. Honestly, seriously.
There's an issue with.
I don't really like it either.
The owl is taking.
We've always been recorded.
We've always been recorded.
And this person could video us. I mean, you're posting it online, posting on YouTube. You're not telling the public, you're everybody here is on YouTube now. Congratulations, you can be starred. I don't like it. It's invasion of your privacy. People come here with their private business, subdividing the land and stuff like that. You know, the people that are involved, the neighbors, they're all notified and they come here. I don't feel that needs to be put online. That's my take. And it's legal in New York, but there's like eleven other states, it's not legal. So New York just hasn't caught up yet. So I don't know, maybe you're leaving, but I understand.
Is it legally, do we have to have that?
No.
Well, we do if the town has capability to do so, which the town does have the capability.
But is it worded so that, like legislation, you know, we shall, we may?
Well, the town can require it. Something, it's not supposed to town require it. This has been a groundswell of your fellow citizens, lying YouTube. I've heard it fifty times over the past two years, over and over and over again. So we said yes, and we made it available and you're absolutely right, that's what Michelle said. Once it's available, the town must make use of it. So this is a request from your neighbors, you might, you know, in your fellow citizens.
We had a discussion about this and you know, we are not elected officials, we are appointed, it's just kinda popped on us. I mean, we just were sitting here and then we go, well, wait a minute, is this videotaping? So.
Well, I.
There's a whole bunch of reasons.
But this has been discussed over and over, not in this forum. Over and over again, in the town of Duvaltamar, there's a Facebook page that Janet is, you know, on. And you've, you've been doing this all over and this is not new stuff. I'm sorry if it is new to any of you. I didn't know you didn't know.
It's new to the.
But this has been demanded of me.
Okay, the town board goes.
So what's the real purpose? I mean.
Once we do it for the town board, it has to be available. That's, I mean, that's what Michelle said.
Right.
Well, Laura's saying, I can't say only town board. It's, I, you know, it's a conundrum. I, I don't know what to tell you guys. I wish it wasn't as uncomfortable to yourselves. I really don't like it to be uncomfortable, but this is, I, I, I wanna say there's hundreds of your fellow residents are demanding this. I don't know, Jenny, you tell me. It's a lot of people.
Yeah, it is, it is very popular.
Right.
Well, you know, it'd be better if they showed up.
I was beat up last year. Cold scum bag and all that stuff by people on that Facebook page and one of them was, I was opening up. Not me, but it was about me, but the town board wasn't opening up.
Well, you know, to be quite frank, I don't think it helps when the stuff's on YouTube. I think YouTube um, creates a lot of problems. I think that, you know, there are minutes that are typically done and are available to everyone.
Yeah, why, I understand it, because I felt exactly the same way you do. I wasn't a big fan of YouTube. I am not.
I'm not a big fan of any of.
But, you know, I mean, how many times do I say, do I turn my back on what residents are demanding? You know, it.
Well, I don't think that.
I gave up. I gave up on the fight. So I recognize and I, and I appreciate it and I agree with you, but I, there's just too many people.
Is there any way of doing this without putting it on YouTube or is it?
Yeah, we don't have to put it on YouTube. You could put it on the, the website, the town's website if the town has um, capability to do so.
Nice.
I didn't know that that was an issue at all, but.
For it to look.
But I agree with you a hundred percent.
Okay, so we have an opportunity here.
I'm gonna bring the laptop.
It can be put on the town's website versus YouTube.
There was an issue with that though. That's why we had to go to YouTube, so let me look into that first.
Okay.
There's a technical.
Would that?
Right. I think there's too much.
At least if.
Too much.
I mean, you know, you gotta go there. You know, I agree, I, I, I agree.
I guess, that's my thought.
What are you guys saying over there?
We're. We're, we're all kinda on this, I think on the same page that, that the YouTube and all that stuff is kinda over the top, I think, you know?
Is, is that mandated that a video is available? Is it mandated?
When the town has it, when the town has gone and made that available, then yes, it is mandated. It's a shall, when practical and or when available.
Well, practical. I mean, we can fight with words here, like Bill Sherman usually does.
In essence, the town board did it in response to the citizens. I mean, wasn't just us coming up with it.
Well, I'd like to know that process, because the citizens, how did they contact the town to do this? I'm just curious. Did they come to meetings?
Yes.
Was it the minority rules or majority rules? Because legislation's typically passed by minorities, so I'm asking that question.
When they're, Lee, I'll tell you.
Come for a residence.
Came up to Shelley after they decided to do this and was happy about it, so, um, that's what she said.
I mean, I'm sorry to disrupt people's preferences. I, I, I really wish it didn't.
That's what she said, so.
It's not unusual for other governments to have it. Green County um, is on YouTube, they stream. Not only just for their legislature, but also for their committees.
Yeah, we know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I don't wanna disrupt people. I satisfy this party and I have both the parties on the other side that are diss.
Waste, waste of the bill.
I lose, no matter what, you know, I don't wanna lose any of yourselves to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe we can look into just having it televised on the towns.
You wouldn't put a curtain over it.
Well, it is live, by the way. I wasn't even wearing that until just now.
Yeah, I, I, I know, and we watched it and could see your picture again.
Oh, God.
I think the towns should also be posting something, so the public, when they come in here for the first time, is aware of it.
Oh, yeah, there probably should be video. Oh, yeah, there probably should be video recording.
We had a zoning board meeting the other week and nothing was made where any zoning board members had actually taken video, uh, footage of us. But from a legal standpoint, I would say that there'd be either a waiver or, um, at least, at the very least, a sign. Uh, you know, acknowledging that you are under recording.
That should be done.
At the very least.
Then there should be a sign up here.
Well, it doesn't harm, but it's not required.
No, it's not required.
There is no expectation of privacy.
Well, it's a courtesy. It's a courtesy.
There's no expectation of privacy in a public space. Only private meetings.
But there is taping you, I believe. You're not allowed to tape anyone without a sign.
You walk into the bank, you walk into Greene County, uh, office building, you see the cameras up there, it's got a tape over it. There's most certainly a point. That camera is here for recording. There's cameras outside this building. That show you walking in.
I know.
There's no waiver.
We're just saying to be nice, nice to the community that comes in here, maybe.
There's nothing wrong with posting it. Where's my, I'll post another door.
Yeah, I mean, because I don't think anyone thinks about it when they're walking in here that there's live, you know.
And it could also be on our webpage too, on the, when it says when, when the meetings meet. It could also just add there, it's also video recorded.
Yeah. I mean, if you look on, on YouTube, there was some guy called auditing something or other, I can't remember what it's called. And he went, he goes all throughout New York State. And he went to the Green County office building. And they stopped him and said, you, and he's got a camera, private citizen. And they said, you can't record it here.
It's not true.
It's not true. There is no right to privacy in a public space. I wish there was, but there isn't. And he wanted the building, opened his camera in the offices. And, um, they followed him every step, you know, other places have arrested this guy and he wins lawsuits. Because he's arrested. There is no such thing as a waiver.
As, as me, I don't really care as much because I'm on other meetings, everything's recorded. But I think nobody was told it was just here one day. And I realized what it was and I just let everybody know.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be my complaint too. The other week at the zoning board meeting, those, we weren't aware that it was actually recording. Um, we just saw it as another, uh, voice recording device, not an actual picture. Um, no, I'm not against the thing. And I think it can be helpful and as a tool to help, uh, meetings and the town and hold people liable for what they say. And perhaps it keeps meetings more professional in some senses. But, uh, yeah, something that we would have liked to know, that would be my only complaint, on the zoning board, that we were not aware of, there's actual video.
Well, maybe we can explore the possibility of just putting it on, to the town's, via the town's website. So if somebody wants it, they have to go to the town and watch it. Is, and how doable that is.
Oh, it's basically the same thing being on YouTube. That's where you're gonna post it, with a link to the website.
You have to go to the town's YouTube channel.
Yeah, you're not gonna, you're not gonna create a whole video library where, I mean, I'm just talking about. I don't know, the standpoint, you're not gonna upload the videos on our servers or their servers or wherever we serve and have it downloadable. It's just so much easier.
And it would be a burden on the town.
Yeah, it's not gonna be easier.
Yeah, that's serious.
I mean, there are a whole eleven views of the last zoning board meeting, so it's not like people are running there to watch it, but it's there.
Wait, this meeting, you know, I told eleven.
Eleven. I think I was one of them.
If they hear about this meeting, it'll be twelve.
I think this is gonna be the most viewed one.
Okay, well, I don't know where to go with this.
Which one are you on?
No, that.
We're done with that.
Um. Barb, you getting suggestions on that or? No.
I was able to load up something on Facebook, but that's not a whole lot better. Especially with, you know, commentaries and so forth. Really, you know, but it was, had to take a, a disc. There's, it's convoluted process and I figured it out and I don't know if I could figure it out again, but I don't know if that's any better.
I don't think it is. Not the show. Yeah, I don't, I don't, yeah. I think it's, I think it's probably in the best place if we could just use YouTube for what it was designed for. I know that people have issues with it. I don't have any issue with it because we've always been recorded. I know it's a public space. I will say that I would assume that over time it would make the meetings more accessible to people who cannot get here but want to know what's going on, just from a standpoint of, of, you know, accessibility.
Which is the purpose.
That was, that was the focus of the complaints. Can't always get here, circle, circle.
Frank, you probably know more about, is there any way of?
Knowledge takes time too.
Unfortunately, I'm gonna lean on right over here. It's a hundred percent legal. I, it's gonna be required. We're just gonna have to deal with it or I, I, it's just, it is what it is. I'm on per, I'm on, I'm on private board meetings that are recorded. But we're not posted online, but, you know.
Okay.
It's a whole new world. I wish we didn't have internet.
All right.
Then it's.
If you have any ideas.
Well, no, I think.
I really don't want to. Okay, okay, well, I, I don't know.
Think about.
You guys would be a huge loss to the town. Um, so.
I mean, for religious reasons, he can't be recorded. Just saying.
They're religious, exactly.
Be careful, you're on. I didn't say anything wrong.
Okay, uh, one, one last thing, uh.
I'm trying to. Oh, Jeff, we, we don't want to be seen wearing the same shirt.
Well, I, I personally don't want to lose any of it. That's all I want.
I'll powder mine. I appreciate you, you're gonna get the glare.
Okay, uh, another small thing, eleventh hour came in. And this is just quite frankly too vague to work with. I think he's gonna have to, there's a guy off of Sheller Park Road. He, he's gonna have to get us some, some more bigger maps and stuff, what he wants to do. Uh, his parcel is actually in the town of Kupusaki. But his driveway goes through, he has an easement through a neighbor's property to the town line. And then naturally on across town line into his, his parcel. He would like to buy that strip from the neighbor. Uh, which I believe, I believe is well near two acres.
It's like a half acre, yeah.
So, uh, you see what I'm saying? Here's the town line.
So Shooks?
Huh?
Who was that?
I don't know. Who, who, who is the guy?
Like, uh, he's a.
You're.
A Russian guy.
Oh, yeah. I don't know.
Yeah, Stephen Killey, Kilev or something.
Okay. Well, I, I, I think what, what I'll just tell him is, I, I believe he can do it by a lot line adjustment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it could be.
Just get back to him and, but he's gonna have to come up with maps.
Okay. Yeah, indeed. Yeah, I already told him that. Okay.
But I, I think the best thing is if he came in.
Yes, a half acre.
And, and talked to us on it and.
Okay, keep in common and speak on it. Okay.
And we can do it. I'm pretty sure it's a lot line adjustment, you know.
Okay.
It, it's a half acre that he wants to buy.
Now, and he has to do both these, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
And that will require a survey.
Yeah, because it's gonna be a legal description.
Like the new survey where the new line would be for his land.
Um, maybe I'll just go back to kind of the law, what you and I have been going through.
Oh, sure.
Uh, the, we did the lot line adjustment for Catseros and Montington down in town. And we just don't seem to be able to get their attorneys to understand they modified the one deed, but not the other one. Both deeds have to be modified.
They still.
It's still not settled.
What is wrong with this people?
Uh, it seems like Mr. Bistone has a problem with, or.
Michael?
No, no.
John?
Yeah, 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 we're, we're all.
Okay, Jeff, all right.
The parcel you're speaking of, that's on, is it on Circle Drive, um, one in Shore Park area?
I just come, oh, all I've seen is come off of Sheller Park Road and, uh, his, but his lot is in the town of Kupusaki.
It doesn't show Circle Drive. It just shows it off.
You're talking about the guy that wants to come in for a lot line easement or the?
Or the driveway you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That's a driveway.
His house is in the town of Kupusaki.
Yeah, his parcel is.
The parcel he looked into purchase is in the town of the ball.
Well, the driveway going back in is in the town of Baltimore. And his neighbor is in the town of Baltimore. So he just wants to buy that strip to get to his house.
And it's gonna be a half acre.
Yes.
Which is consistent with the lot size of those homes in the Shore Park, I mean, in the Shore Park area. There, those are half acres because they have a water district.
Well, this seems, this seems to have bigger parcels than that.
There are a few. There are a few on the, uh.
Can't quite make it out. You can make it out, but.
There may have to be a referral to myself. Because if it is a existing lot that's being subdivided in the water district, that parcel, the new parcel, will also be in the water district.
Uh, he, he isn't, he isn't creating a new parcel. He's taking this strip, which I understand he already has an easement on that goes just the driveway strip, which is only about a half an acre. And he's taking that from the neighbor, so he, so he actually owns it instead of having a right.
So you're gonna talk about a lot line adjustment.
Correct.
Creating a new parcel that'll.
No, 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 it's gonna be joined to his existing parcel. We're not creating a new parcel.
We're gonna make his parcel bigger.
The parcel lines end at the town line.
You wanna look at this map?
Yeah, I think, yeah, this.
There's gonna be, he's gonna own two parcels, one in Kupusaki, one in New Baltimore.
Correct.
No.
No.
Oh, then there's mine. I don't need to look.
He's just, he's buying his driveway. He's been using, it's been an easement. He wants to own the driveway. It's just a narrow strip of land.
Well, if it's not in the town of Baltimore, what difference?
Bill, it's in New Baltimore.
It is in New Baltimore.
To get to his property, he's going through New Baltimore to get to his house.
So he's buying a parcel in the Baltimore to get to his house in Kupusaki.
He already, by looks of this, he already owns the parcel which straddles the town's line.
Correct.
His, uh, although.
He owns them, the town of Baltimore. His property runs through both towns according to their length.
I'm trying to read his writing, but it's.
You know what?
We need better.
So he lives in the town of Kupusaki, right?
We need, we need to have him, uh.
Yeah, because this here is.
But Jeff has a good point. If he was creating another parcel.
He is.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
I don't know, I can't make this out.
I know. I think.
I didn't want it to be a surprise to him that he is now has a parcel in a water district.
Right.
I didn't want that to be a surprise.
So he would have to pay for water because of this half acre parcel.
He doesn't need water, but he still gets.
Still has to pay.
Oh, and I'm in repair. One seventy-seven times four.
Yeah, I just didn't want him to be surprised. That's all.
Correct. That's, that's a good point. But I'm not even sure this is in the Sheller Park district. We need better, better information on it.
But that's good information if it is.
That's a good point. I'll bet you brought it up. Okay, um.
What's this other thing on here? I'm still hearing.
Oh, that was weird.
That was, uh.
That's what I got going up reading when you asked me the question. I'm looking at it, I'm like.
That, that was a little strange, uh, his regards to, uh, Hannah Christ Solar.
Yeah. Oh, I did read that, okay.
It was almost like, it was almost like somebody was putting a plug in for us to.
Yeah.
He had to push it, push the project. That's how I read it. Like someone gave this lady a call.
Yeah, and that's.
I, I was sitting there reading this. The chairman has me, I'm, I'm sitting here scratching my head like, what is this? So it looks like almost a letter of support, but it doesn't.
It's almost like somebody put in a call. Why else would she have sent the letter?
That makes sense. Okay, we have minutes.
Okay, one last thing. I hope this is it. Where the hell that goes with it? I have it here in a while. Uh, okay, here it is, okay. Uh, August eighth, twenty twenty-four, uh, planning board minutes. Uh, I, 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 for the most part, it's good, but there was a few things and it was probably as a result of trying to take this off a tape. Um, in regards to the tower project, the, um, ham radio tower. Uh, I missed this. Height of tower for Mr. Rodriguez is a hundred and forty feet, a hundred and thirty-five feet, a hundred and thirty-seven feet or something, with the base at six forty.
Would that be elevation?
Maybe, feel, maybe, uh.
These are, are six hundred and forty up and it's gonna be.
Yeah, feel, uh, above sea level.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
With the height of the tower roughly seven hundred and eighty feet, yeah. Yeah. Should really say.
Above sea level. Okay, um, it's just a little confusing, but I, I guess, you know, if anybody questions.
The minutes are accurate.
Pardon me?
It is accurate. I mean, that's how it was discussed in the meeting.
Right, okay. Um, I get, you know, if anybody questions it, it was, um, okay, it's seven eighty.
Well, just say above sea level too.
MSL, mean sea level, yeah. Um. Did everybody get a chance to look at these at all? Okay. Um.
As a matter of fact, this is the meeting where the family came in that discussed the five acres up on nine W.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well then, uh, we'll just, uh, go with that. I just thought maybe, uh, might have got you some questions. Well then, uh, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for the August?
A motion to approve, um, did everyone agree though, I just went with this new Baltimore solar, because they were looking for copies of this, these things?
They want, yeah, they want like a.
Yeah, with the polls and everyone's, I, I think this is accurate.
I, I think it was very explanatory, yes.
She said these were good. She just wanted them approved by the board and like official.
Mm-hmm. Okay, a motion to approve the August eighth planning board meeting, twenty twenty-four.
I'll look at that. Yes.
Uh, Michelle second, all favor?
All right.
Motion carried. Okay, I think that's all we got.
There's been a lot of minutes, over ten minutes.
Oh, can we put them off? I didn't really get a chance to look at them.
You're gonna make me sweat another one?
I'm sorry.
Did anybody else read them?
I read.
We can put them up as a draft.
If you guys wanna do both, I'll.
Barbara, there's one change in there that was gonna be on there.
Only one.
Well, yes, only the one. But I, I'll send it to you unless you guys are voting on it tonight.
But it doesn't look like enough people have read it, that you can believe it, and I can put it up as a draft, like a.
Yeah. Just why don't I?
Sort of on air.
Let's get this done.
It was in regards to, uh, comprehensive plan.
We already fixed the names.
I don't know, you got me saying this may go against, against the comprehensive plan. But I don't think the subdivision goes against the comprehensive plan, was my point.
Oh, you're talking about Pine Haven?
The Pine Haven, yeah.
Just cross it out. And then I'll give you this copy.
Yeah, that's fine. And then I'll revise it tomorrow.
All right. Probably meant to say doesn't go against the comprehensive plan, thing.
That's correct. That's what you said, that it does not.
Does it? Yeah.
I thought that was strange when I read it.
As far as in regards to that Pine Haven, I still think we ought to push for that one lot that was small to, maybe the lines be changed so it allows whoever buys it.
What's the engineer doing with this project? What was the point of?
Uh.
Because it's, it's what the town of Kupusaki, we figured the same engineer probably.
Yeah, well, you know, you, you gotta realize the whole water, this whole thing sheds right through the town of Kupusaki's drinking water runs all through that center there.
But what's our ultimate goal? Are we going to, uh, implement it in the approval process?
It may change.
It's still being recorded. It's still part of the.
It may, it may change septic system or stuff like that. Cause my understanding is, um, that's.
Because they have to do special septic systems. So as a result of the engineer's involvement, we may have to incorporate into our approval process that they have to comply with the same stringent requirements as those in, okay.
I just think that'd be a good idea to have an engineer look the whole thing over and, uh, give his, his thoughts on it.
Just so we're all on the same page, we know why we're doing it.
I mean, if, if you, if you trace their water.